Good afternoon all and welcome to the August 10 meeting of the Board of Regional Commissioners, otherwise the Board of Municipal County Commissioners. And we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance because we have a flag on here.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will have a moment of silence. We want to remember all of those who have served overseas now in Iraq and Afghanistan and also to remember John Mitchell, a former selectman at Toluamis, who just passed away yesterday I believe and his services are on Friday afternoon. For those who, for those at home, we are at Nauset Beach in the Gazebo and we're not having a concert, we're actually having a meeting.
But we are acting.
Well, we are acting, we always act. And we will be, after we do our business, we will be going into recess because we're going to have a joint meeting with the Assembly of Delegates and we will report on energy efficiency programs. So we have a summary of items with any of you to make a motion.
I'll move them.
In a second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, one opposed, three in favor, motion. Is there any other business?
I just have one thing that I want to announce. As you know, we leased one of the former doctor's residents to the Valley Farm thrift shop and they've invited us, they were just recently open and as you know, they're also working out a community garden out there and this is in Bourne at the former county hospital site. And they've invited us to come out and see the thrift shop and the future site of the community garden. So I said I'd pass that along to you and I'm sure you'll want to take them up on their offer sometime either in September or early October and we'll arrange to, I think maybe have a county commissioners meeting out there, we'll find some space somewhere at the county hospital site and have a meeting out there, give a little tour of the thrift shop, go and so maybe take a little tour of the AmeriCorps facility, the residence that's out there. So we'll set something up along those lines for a future county.
I would like to mention that last week we had a tour with Bill Clark and the extension of service in areas in that area that I have been funded by the extension service, which included the municipal county fairgrounds, the Talonate property, which was acquired recently by the town and the county was able to provide funding for some of the affairs, the Molinbo school where they planted trees from the county tree nursery, and then the Columbus Farm, which received grants by pressure by local. And we actually had lunch there and had a tour of the farm, the almonds and chickens and all the other kinds of animals that happened. And it was really a great day. It ended later than we thought, but I think all of the people who were on the tour really enjoyed it and heard some very positive comments from some of us in the year. So that was a good thing and we won't be doing it again until next year. But what do we start on the roller cake for next year? Province Town or walk our way back west again?
I might mention that Teresa Martin had published a very wonderful paper on, in Tape Card Today, I think, that highlighted many of the things that had happened during that visit and would recommend it to folks. So if you're so inclined, you know, go to that and you'll see what we were doing. And I noticed I need a haircut.
I think to next year we should do a lot more publicity on it because I think it was, is a truly valuable tour for a lot of people who really say, what does, what presence has the county had in our community? And it's a great way of finding that out, even though thanks to Steve, it's not been whitewashed, so it will be shown locally. But at the same time, I think we could get a lot more people.
Well, one of the things, I spoke to Bill Clark about that and I talked about maybe inviting some of the selectmen and the town officials and the towns that we visit, you know, because Heather was aware of it. She wasn't exactly sure where we had gone, but I spoke to her a couple days later and she's aware of it.
Is there any other business?
Well, I'd just like to mention that on Thursday I went to the Suicide Prevention Committee and September 10th coming up will be the day in which suicide will be memorialized, Suicide Prevention will be memorialized and they're concerned about putting a certificate inside the studio. There was a second meeting of the Ocean Management Group on Thursday, we met in Harwich. Unfortunately, they couldn't get a quorum and I think, you know, we need to remind people that this is an ongoing issue and the Cape Cod Commission does need, can, can have the support. There was the annual meeting of the Compact of Conservation Trusts on Thursday night over Ocean Lake, I mean, very well, it must be about 300 people there and they're doing great things. On Friday, I went to the LC3, a small kind of pharmacy meeting, and they will be attending Economic Development Council meeting in September to talk about issues of concern there. The NPO met on Monday and at that meeting that we had, you know, we reminded the state that, you know, us locals are interested in making sure that our voice is heard in regard to some of the projects. And we did bring up the issue of trying to have a positive start with regard to looking at the bridge replacement. So I want people to know that we are looking at that and we are concerned about getting the right contacts with the Corps of Engineers. We know that although the local Corps of Engineer people are great, we need to get to the decision makers in DC, so that was, that was brought up. And that was all the comments that we did.
Well, I was at the Dallas Congress and the bachelor was there, you know, the landscaper from Dennis.
Was he chasing you?
With a lot, not, with a lot of people who were very interested in getting his autograph, but also rumored that he will be the bachelor on the next season, who really knows. But anyway, he was interested, say please.
Well, I have been needless to say everywhere and in a lot of different, a lot of different venues, but I will be taking off early today because I have been picked to go to Claire Goyer's retirement party today at Alberto's and Claire Goyer is the executive director of Duffy, who has done a fantastic job leading that agency and years of work in the human service community at large. And I think all of us can wish her well on her retirement. And although it is our loss, it is her gain, I think it's time for her to enjoy her grandchildren and she assures us that the new director who's coming in at the helm is fantastic. So she has big shoes to fill, but I'm sure she's very confident we welcome that new executive. But I'll be off sending everyone's regards here to Claire as I go, so I'll be skating out a little bit early on this. Thank you.
Motion Teresa.
I'll make a motion, we recess and then we'll be back.
In about five minutes.
We'll send it to the four of us.
Great, thank you.
Rebatte the orica there.
Yeah, I'm going to open the meeting, is that all right?
All right, and I'm also going to adjourn, I'm also going to open our meeting and we will, we will start with a moment of silence to honor our troops who have died in service to our country and all those serving our country in the armed forces. Thank you, we now stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I think it's right behind you. Right there, Joe.
Pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eight foot call roll.
Richard Anderson, Ron Bergstrom.
Here.
George Bryant. Leo Kakounis.
Here.
Christopher Cananga. Thomas Keys. Marsha King.
Here.
Thomas Lynch. Teresa Martin.
Here.
John Omen.
Here.
Paul Pilcher.
Here.
Anthony Scalise.
Yeah.
Fred Schopf. Charlie Striebel.
Here.
Julia Taylor. Mr. Speaker, we do not have a quorum vote, but we do have 42.5% present.
Delegate from Harwich, Mr. Kakounis, has pointed out in the charter allows us to discuss issues with a numerical quota, with a numerical quorum, that is, the majority of the individual delegate, but not take any action in the vote. Before we go any further, I'd like to tell the Assembly and those here that unfortunately Diane Thompson, our clerk, is on a medical leave of absence and she anticipates that she will be out for three months. So temporarily Maggie has searched around and she's found a replacement, Michelle Springer, here, who works for the Cape Cod Commission, we're not going to hold that against her, but she has agreed to.
Says who?
She, she has agreed to step in and at some point when we have a quorum, we're going to have to nominate her and appoint her as clerk. If you remember, the clerk is appointed along with the other officers at the beginning of the year, so, yes, Mark?
I just want to clarify, Mr. Speaker, that the commissioners can hire her so she can effectively start working and then, you're correct, you guys will have to name her as the temporary acting clerk.
Okay, I pass around a card, a get well card for Diane if you want to sign it if you haven't already and hopefully our wishes and prayers go with her and hopefully she'll be back with us before too long. Okay? I'm not going to, I'm not going to take any votes on approval because I can't. So we will then go right into communications from the Board of Regional Commissioners who are already in session.
Yes, we are in session and we have, we have Kevin Galligan here today to address, to address us and we consider this a joint meeting of the commissioners and the Assembly of Delegates and Kevin is going to make a presentation to us on energy efficiency as part of the Cape Cod Compact.
But before that.
Before that.
But before that.
We'd like to, if you have any other communications, if any of members of the Board have any questions for the commissioners, Mark, do you have something?
I actually have three things, two things that we are submitting today. We are submitting a resolution for the transfer of the AmeriCorps funding that we put in in a lump sum, we do that every year and then Kevin lets me know how we, how we want to allocate those funds into the appropriate line items. So I'll be submitting that to you as a resolution. And we are also forwarding to the Assembly and Ordinance for your consideration. This is the amendments to Chapter G, the growth in center zone regulations from Cape Cod Commission, so we're submitting that today for your consideration. And the third thing I wanted to do is, one of the things that you have received in your packet and is the year end, we call it the Treasurers Report, looks like this, I do have a few extra copies, most of all gotten that in your packet. And I do want to just hand out kind of introduction to that, it shows you. And that just kind of gives you an introduction as to what the Treasurers Report does, where it goes, how it's put together and a little bit on the reserve funds that are in there. I'm sorry, here is some extras if you need. I don't know if anybody needs a copy. Is that all right? And.
Yeah, I got it.
So in terms of the Treasurers Report, I like to say, you know, everything from the root to nuts on every one of the funds that the county has control over is in the Treasurers Report. It's sent to the Department of Avenue Local Services every year around August or September, dealing with all of the transactions that finance has dealt with for the previous fiscal year. It's a detailed receipts and expenditures report, also documents what unpaid bills and salary transfers, if any, were done in the previous fiscal year and it shows you at the end what the county's debt service schedule is, most of, all of our debt actually at this point in time is on the separate betterment program. So, and then the report really has a summation of all of the receipt and expenditure activity of the county. And then on the sideways report, this is the one that really shows you everything that took place in fiscal year 2010, all the receipts that we received, both on the general fund, the Cape Cod Commission fund, the sheriff fund, because as you remember, we had the sheriff for about half of last fiscal year. And then as you turn the pages of that, you'll see every other fund and you see the fund name, fund number and name on the far left and the receipts and payments out of that fund on the columns on the right and the ending fund balance. You see that for every fund that the county has possession and control over. So it's a very useful at year end report, you can go through it at your leisure and find out just about everything we do. You will see that the sheriff funds all end with a balance of zero and that's because at that point in time, we trans, at the end of the calendar year last year, the sheriff became a function of the state and transferred all the funds that we had for the sheriff to the state. And then, I'm sorry they're not numbered, but it's probably page seven or eight and it has my signature at the bottom of it, looks like this, it gives you the year end balance and what everything looks like for the year end. In the general fund, the capital projects fund, the Cape Cod Commission fund and the jail fund, those four major funds that we currently operate under. And you see that on the general fund, we ended the year with an unreserved fund balance of $778 about. We managed to cover the reserves that we have, which are the statutory reserve, the incumbents reserve, the stabilization fund and the capital improvements reserve. You also see that we did not budget any money in terms of rollover from fiscal year 10 and fiscal year 11, that was the first time in a long, long time that we didn't assume any money left over. So basically we were able to finish the year in the black, didn't have really any money left over except such as we could put in the reserve funds that we had. That's really all I wanted to say about the year end report, be happy to answer any questions or maybe at another meeting when some of the other delegates are present, I can, you know, go into this a little bit more detail.
I was going to ask you to do it all over again, Mark.
That would be simple, because I didn't really say that, Mark.
You asked my question.
Anyone else have any questions for Mark?
Some quick questions for you, Mark. We received, the delegates received notice of several grants that were given, that we received, one of them was a grant for $117,000 for smoking education.
It's a tobacco control program.
Now, is that a recurring grant?
That is one that we've done every year, but I think what I have to do on that one, if you look at the budget that you approved, there's only 95, 99, so I will have to come back to you guys, I believe, with a supplemental, but I'm right.
Yeah, but what I, I guess the question is, what is that money used for? How is it physically, what do you do for?
Bob, that pays for Bob Collet salary and Bob Collet, as you know, does both, two things with the tobacco control program, they do an education program and they do enforcement, I guess is for, basically this thing operations where they use certain people to go in and try to purchase cigarettes.
And so basically that, that's what he does?
That's what he does, that's what they do.
And is that, that money comes down from some fund of like a?
Comes from the tobacco.
Tobacco settlement.
Yes.
Anything else from any of the delegates?
Is $450,000 a lot of money or is that the standard legal reserve?
I think Tony, are you mean, you're talking about our legal reserve and the stabilization fund? I think it's been at that level since we established it after the 2000 charter change, I don't think that one's changed.
Okay, and we try to maintain that level every year?
Yeah, I mean, because I guess some people would say, could it be more? Yeah, could it be less?
Do we need that much in that account? Is that a requirement?
I think it's a prudent level of reserves to have, I think you'd always want to have something in a legal reserve fund, you just, you don't know what you may face out in the future.
It doesn't appear as though we're getting sued as often as we used to, is that my, when I say that, I'm being serious when I say that because it's no offense to the Cape Cod Commission.
Bill, did you have something?
Well, I think that we should think about the fact that we are, we have just faced more litigation because we did, the Cape Cod Commission took a position with regards to the wind farm and we, you know, we're sort of finishing out with that and.
And how much did that use? Or how much will it use?
I don't know.
Yeah, I would say, Bill, that you don't point to any one area because it's not really, it's, it's, you look at it from a, we have a $25 million budget, more or less, and you have 400, I'd say $500,000, so I can't do the math quick in my head, but what is that, 2.5%? Fairly low, I would say, but, you know, is it a reasonable reserve level to have? Given mass general laws and?
We unfortunately face, in my opinion, face, you know, face a situation where we can't always anticipate what would, what would happen. I think we're pursuing all to make sure that follows the support that the litigation committee has given. You may remember that several years ago we formed a litigation committee that would provide some oversight for legal expenditures so that we wouldn't be placed in the same position of frivolous suits. And I think that litigation committee has indeed done its work. At the same time, the cost of legal services, you know, has indeed gone up, so that's, so it's a balance between, between those three things. We're anticipating, talking more about this at a future meeting, I think, and, but we are, it's something that from the time that I've been on, I've been a commissioner, I've always been concerned about how do we control and manage legal offenses. When I was, when I was serving as the Commissioner's representative on the Cape Cod Commission, I had great concern that, that they have the tools with which if some, if, you know, somebody came in and let's say opposed a ruling, that they would have the ability to, let's say, to stand up for what they had voted on to, to a project. You know, we're in a very litigious state, so I agree, I have agreed because that's why, because I initially questioned them, but I have agreed that we do need to have what I call a properly assessed, totally assessed amount that we need for what I would call, let's see, we're not unanticipated, but what, you know, what our expectations would be.
Unintended consequences.
Well, no, the unintended consequences come out after we do what we do something. I'm confident that the amount that we've asked for is not unreasonable in terms of what we, what we think we need in order to operate, you know, $25 million dollar operation.
Anyone else? Well, this is a joint meeting, so I'm going to turn it over to the Chair of the, oh, George, did you?
On the last page where the table indicates where the county are invested, who makes the decision for the county to deal exclusively with the Canadian Bank?
Well, as you know, George, that Canadian Bank used to be a Cape Cod bank and we have certain restrictions as to what we can operate with, but mostly it's a service issue. We had some issues, I would say, with that bank shortly after the transition. They worked their issues out and I think we've been very happy with the service that we've got, so.
I mean, you think you can't deal with Bank of America or?
Well, we don't see a reason to change at this point in time. There's not any reason for us to change, we're happy with the bank.
Do they, does Bank North give you special rates?
We're happy with the service.
There's no reason that we ought to change.
Nobody American policy?
No, we don't, yeah. That would be our policy to enforce.
I've asked this special before and it goes on and on, I think there's a flaw there of itself.
I just, yeah, I just, I see what George is going to say, I just wondered if banks, if you, I mean, the county and the Assembly and Commissioners are committed to regional economic development, so the question is, do we deal with banks that lend locally and add to the local economic development or are we sending the money off to somebody who's doing mega loans in New York City or investing with NATO office stuff? I know, I don't know if you know the answer to that question, but do they give you a report to say how much money is spent on the cave?
Certainly asked from the person, you know.
I know there are certain federal requirements as to how much has to be spent, but I just wondered if they go beyond that.
No, there are no federal requirements with how much has to be spent locally.
Not for us, I mean for the banks.
Oh, you, yeah.
And the community and the investment.
Several years ago, we did invite banks to, let's say, to keep our business.
No, we haven't done that in a long time.
But when we did do that, I believe that the.
We haven't done that since that was Cape Cod Bank Trust.
But when we did do that, these proposals that we pointed towards the bank and we chose, we gave the one that put us above it, it was a special service.
Oh, it was Cape Cod Bank Trust. Any else? If not, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. At this time, I would like to introduce Kevin Galligan from the Compact, who's going to talk about energy efficiency. Kevin, so glad to have you here.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair.
Good topic at this point.
You live here, right? I live, yeah, I'm walking to my town and it's a great venue. Wish more people would show up, but at the same time, it is fortunate this has been taped, so the listening audience will also try to speak up, but also thanks to Maggie Downey, our administrator of the Compact, she's handing out just a brief presentation number one to keep me on point as well as to provide some take home for you as well. But if you folks saw the Cape Cod Times this morning, front page below the bulb, there was a very nice article about a participant in our program, so I can make this a short presentation, say read the paper and let's go eat, but.
Thank you for coming.
Marsha, I'm with you, but it was really the best way to recap, you know, how we really promote our programs to encourage people to take the first step, whether it's a compact for the rest of the bulb and then go further, because as the article said, sometimes this is confusing for people. Fortunately, we have a local resource through the support of the county and your folks that, we live here, we work here, we generally know our businesses and we've got a great record of service. So I want to deal the, kind of recap results to date, number one. Number two, talk a little bit about a new program under our three-year plan that is really striving to go deeper, meaning how can we harvest even more energy savings out of our businesses and homes than we have in the past? And along the theme of three points on the agenda and three takeaway points, just to kind of leave us with in terms of thoughts on energy efficiency. So if you turn the page to slide number two, results year to date, and this is looking at just the past nine years of service and we report our annual activity for the previous year around the July, August timeframe. So again, we continue to deliver extremely cost-effective programs. What that means is every one of the dollars that we administer on your behalf, you, meaning all the ratepayers, we're delivering back in highly cost-effective energy savings, meaning one to two, three, four times the return. Over these nine years, we have invested over $50 million, again, thanks to the fiscal capabilities of the county to look after the funds that we saw, Mark, listed, we're one of those ins and outs that comes through the county. The return, as I mentioned, is better than you can put into any bank, whether it be a local or a Bank of America, because we're really giving you a return of three to four times that investment. You can't get it anywhere else. The savings are starting to add up in terms of peak energy reductions, not just the monthly energy savings on your bill in kilowatt hours, but we're adding up to megawatts, which is equivalent to about 2% of the canal electric generating plant. Every bulb, every hot water heater that we've been able to make efficient over these nine years is additive. So we're really starting to become a little force to be reckoned with. The savings, when you add them up over these many years, is as well, 103,600 megawatt hours. As we know, the cost of power all in delivered is about still 18, 19 cents, so that adds up to a savings of about $20.7 million per year of what consumers otherwise would have been paying had it not been for participation in these growth. would have been paying had it not been for participation in these programs. It really is a tremendous story, and I'm happy to be here to share it with you because you've supported us. And I think you can take this message out, you know, to others to say, this is really great stuff. It's not that we're the only ones doing it either. We are part of a new statewide planning process that supports our programs on a multi-year basis going forward, which really provides a nice basis for planning, both hiring resources and delivering services to customers through long-term contracts. We have also, as I think many of you know, significant funding increases. Years ago, as Charlotte, one of our founding board members from the town of Yarmouth remembers, we managed about $4 to $5 million a year. This year's budget, that we take extremely serious because it's a bigger budget than ever before, is $18 million. Next year will be over $20 million. And the year after that, provided we, bless you, follow what the statutory requirements are on us, as long as we can find all cost-effective measures, we go after them. That's what we're required to do by law. We also have to not only report to our local governing board, and happy to come and speak to you folks, but I travel to Boston quite often. We also come under the review of the Energy Efficiency Advisory Council, the DPU, and there are various working groups that all chime in with, why aren't you looking at this? Why aren't you doing that? And frankly, we've got, you know, really active participation that helps our programs. The next slide at the bottom just talks about where the programs have built, from prescriptive type measures where we give people rebates, to getting more of a system-based approach, to where we're at the top of the pyramid. How can we do comprehensive things, whether it be in individuals' homes or businesses? So, that's kind of the energy pyramid. Yes?
Can I ask a question about the... You were talking about long-term planning. Is there any plans to spread the load so that people are encouraged to use electricity in the early mornings or later in the evenings to get that energy spread that's so efficient? Have you partnered with the state or advocated on those behalf?
Within, John, within the Green Communities Act, there are pilot programs underway for what's called dynamic pricing pilots. M-Star has not chosen to use the tape for that, but we are monitoring what they're doing in the communities they've picked. Later on, I'll talk to you about a pilot program that we're doing that actually will able to dovetail with that, where consumers can actually see their own use. And come the day that pricing signals may be able to change, we'll actually be able to be ready to dovetail that together.
Wash your clothes, Ed.
It's absolutely... It makes sense because when the grid is lower at night, power really is cheaper. But we don't see it today in our rates, but we should. Again, the slide about mining deeper savings is really all about the enhancements that we've made to the programs. A home energy audit now, we do every bulb that a customer wants us to put in. Every bulb that, you know, we can put in, we do. We integrate with air sealing. In other words, it's not just about insulation, it's tightening up all those holes in the home. And we do that free of charge now, where it's built into the design of the program. We also increase the rebates for heating and hot water systems that we install. The rebates are much higher than they ever have been. And the other thing under the home energy audits is the heat loan, which is a zero-interest loan. We buy down the interest, frankly, from not enough financial institutions participate, but we do have a few. But it makes customers go even further because they can borrow up to $15,000 and we buy down the interest rate. So, we've seen a really uptick in that. The new construction program, I won't go into a lot of detail, but we really do canvass the whole marketplace to address lighting. HVAC, you might be aware of it, but on the Cape, we are a summer peaking operation. So, cooling is particularly the load that we want to go after, finding ways to be more efficient. As our population increases in the summer, the burden put on the grid is primarily air-conditioning driven. So, we really have focused on doing that. And then I'll talk a little bit more about the commercial industrial programs further on, but we're really trying to be more comprehensive and succeeding at that with commercial buildings. So, here's the last three points, the takeaways for you, is you should know that we are being very innovative, not just locally, but working with all types of partners. Combined heat and power, it's called micro CHP, where in homes and businesses, they can actually generate their own electricity, is something we're promoting right now. Solid-state lighting, referred to as LEDs, you have heard about them, they're coming very fast. You're going to be seeing later this year, labels, just like you see the Energy Guide label on appliances. There are now going to be more consumer labeling by both the Department of Energy and the Federal Trade Commission to give consumers information about the choices of lighting, LEDs being one of them. Super-high efficient heating and hot water equipment, I talked about briefly. We're looking at more installations of central air conditioning tied into the way we button up a home and a business to make it more efficient. The next bullet is really how do we bring together both the energy efficiency, demand response, kind of what John Bowman was mentioning, is to get the consumer to know the time of use when you use electricity should vary in terms of the price you pay. So, we're trying to marry demand response, energy efficiency, renewables together. Advancing building practices. As you know, we've really advanced already in 55 homes on the Cape and Vineyard, green, affordable construction. And we want to make that more mainstream through our incentives. And again, on the point John had made about monitoring our electricity use real-time, we have some pretty impressive results of savings that consumers are making just on their own by us giving them a device or a computer screen that sees what their real-time uses. And when they see, you know, there's a blip, you know, they're literally calling home and saying, what are you doing? Turn off the washer. You know, so it's really getting people more engaged in behavior change that goes beyond devices and measures that we can install. The next takeaway, number two, is you should be really pleased because I think we've got some early signs of recovery through energy efficiency that may be in the offering. We have over 70 new construction projects in queue. These are projects that we're not going to finish up this year, but we're working with business leads, municipal leads for new buildings that will be constructed and built with our assistance in '11, '12, 2013. It really is great. So, the messages finally come through loud and clear that we've been saying to them, you know, don't call us when you move in, call us when you're just at the, you know, at the creative thinking stage. So, it is happening. Relative to the retrofit activity that we've got, we have over 300 participants that we expect to complete just this year. Overall, in the commercial sector, businesses, we're likely to deliver over $7 million of benefits just this year. We have more than 50 town municipal projects within the programs that we expect to be serving this year. It really is a great message to be taken away. The number three takeaway, which is very unique to us, the other state program administrators do not sit in the same position that we do, I think, as a public entity. We're very unique in that we can go after additional grants that a private utility cannot. So, we were very successful last year of receiving the USDA Agricultural Small Business Grant, $100,000, that is dovetailing well with our small business audit. We're looking at efficiency of greenhouses, of pumps, of motors, of control systems, in addition to what we typically do with light bulbs and insulation. The other thing is, again, thanks to Maggie's very hard work with DOE, the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grants, we get a direct allocation of over $700,000. Again, that's going directly to things that are significant that we wouldn't otherwise have been able to do alone. So, again, the little note I put at the top is we're really maximizing ratepayer benefits at a minimum cost. These are not charges that are going on the electric bill. And the last is really just a big thank you because we've got recognition from EnergyStar, the National Energy Education Development Project, the NEED project, has recognized our program specifically for what we've done. NEED, I think you know, this year we've got four award-winning schools through the last school year. Sandwich was recognized as a national school leader in sustainability. We're a grassroots organization, I think, through, you know, the efforts that we do to the public. I think this is a great opportunity to get the word out for anybody that's listening and wants to participate or learn more about our programs. Our 800 number is 800-797-6699. Do call it. But again, thanks to your leadership and support of our programs, you know, take this message anywhere you'd like. It's a very good one. We've got very high customer, retailer, vendor contacts that really make our program shine. And we think we make them shine too by the results. And then last but not least, as you know, we've got a very significant, and what I consider a very live staff, of 12 people that are local, they work very hard on our behalf every day, and happy to give you this report.
Kevin, you might mention that many of our live employees are local folks as well, that they do contract services and housing assistance corporations. The houses are, let's say, some of our audit, contact audit personnel, but also local folks. So, we're providing employment to many local people. And we say that our employment is close to, as it is at a livable wage level as opposed to some of the other companies here on the Cape.
Good one.
Oh, and one other question if I may. Is this going to be available on the Cape Light Contact webpage?
Yes, all of our presentations, all the way back to 2001. If anybody wants them, they're available. And this will be posted tomorrow.
Kevin, I'm just curious as to how, if I'm a small business or a small town, how do I get in the queue? How do we... What's the application process?
It's a very simple thing. You can call the number. In many cases, we already are working with many of the towns, but again, 800-797-6699. Calls come right through to the county, and we'll look up your past participation. You may see that you've supported the new, at the time, rural town hall renovation. But if you've got ECUW or Service Center or...
Same thing for a small business?
All calls come into one place, and we triage them out to where they're best able to.
John?
Once again, for the audience, if they call, homeowner calls, Cape Light Contact today, what's the lead time? When can they expect an energy audit in their home?
We are looking at our response of approximately two weeks. And again, expectation-wise, when they call us, we take all the information as to whether you're a business or you're a homeowner, you're seasonal, you know, what's the window of time you'd like us to call back. And then they'll get a call very shortly as to a convenient time to schedule.
And this must be a perfect time for people to call ahead so that they can get ahead of the heat and season.
Absolutely. And we've had a few chilly nights the last few days. The other thing is, there was an insert, again, in a suggestion of one of the Cape Light Contact governing board members that was blasted into the newspaper. Some of us don't like it because they fall out on the ground when you're picking up the paper in the morning, but actually, it has generated a very significant increase in phone calls. So, I think, you know, different ways we're trying to reach out to really increase participation, but, you know, the response has been very good.
Mr. Speaker, I just would like to say, as a member of the Assembly and as Vice Chairman of the Cape Light Contact Governing Board, I want to thank you, Maggie, and all of the other 12-plus people who are doing this and working so hard. And I'm just delighted to see the results. It's marvelous. It really is. As they say, we've come a long way, baby. 1997, 1997, when we established the Cape Light Contact, we went through some really hard times, some ups and downs, and I think it's been worth it. So, thank you.
So, $20 million is your budget?
This year's budget is $18 million. Next year, we're forecasting and approved by the DPU to go up to $24. Again, we need to be sticking to that all cost-effective, so we do have to screen projects. But it's a tremendous responsibility.
I say this all the time, so don't take it you want to not be critical, but I remember 1997, and I remember former Speaker Tom Braga going around, Scott Ridley, I think it was also going around. The primary focus of the Cape Light Contact then was a buying collaborative. In other words, it was to use the collaboration of all the towns to basically get a better get. And that was the primary focus. And a lot of things happened since then, that other organizations, other suppliers have cherry-picked things. But you say there's been a net savings of $20 million over the course of nine years?
Right in that. That's an annual number.
That's an annual number. Okay, that makes more sense.
When we treat a home in 2002, those savings accrue year after year. And they really are a layered effect. When we have supported the construction of, for example, an EnergyStar home, that home is going to hopefully be in service for 100 years.
Now, have you done any long-range, as far as the price goes, as to what the total price of electricity purchased through the Compact is compared to the total cost purchased in what used to be called a standard offer, I don't know, somebody else?
And that's what I would say to you, that would be somebody else. I look after, and I have a full plate with energy efficiency. There are power supply experts on staff, Maggie is one, Joe Sorries. And again, the handout that I provided on the insert promoting energy efficiency, if you look on the back, it does speak to an advisory that we offer customers that are considered competitive supply because although we are an aggregation group for getting the best value for customers in electric pricing, we have brought new entrants to the market that are competing. And as you said, they're cherry-picking or they're trying to tailor to the specific customer needs. We think that's great, but we have advised people to just look at the terms and conditions carefully before you sign or make the phone call and convert over. We've had, you know, I think, many good results with customers that recognize, you know, the stability that we're bringing in terms of price. It may not be a big savings, but I think we're bringing more stability to price.
Kevin, I want to add this, and it's very important, that regardless of how the price per kilowatt hour goes up of electricity, the energy conservation measures, when applied, provide a permanent relief for all electric ratepayers. It's very important that the more you save, the less electricity is used, and that truly is a permanent savings. Plus the fact that we have this money to do that. It's a net savings, a net gain, it's a good thing, and no one who listens to this program shouldn't. Should wait, should get on the phone, call and get in the queue so that you get that energy conservation to begin those savings.
All right. I agree, and I think for the people who are listening, the lesson is if you're worried about your electric bill, you probably are not going to do much about the price of natural gas, but if you apply to the energy efficiency program, you can lower your own individual costs much quicker than you can by complaining about the pricing.
There are figures that are available from the Cape Light Contact that shows that the price of natural gas has been increasing and the amount of electricity that's being used on the Cape has been decreasing. And you'll also see, if you take a look at those, you know, at that information that's available, that where there had been a peak, let's say in 2007 in August, you'll see that that peak has been flattened out. And if you did the regression, you begin to see that it's a general trend downward with regard to electric use, which is the permanent saving for all of the rate, all the electricity used on the Cape. So, the price of natural gas is going to go up, the effect of the Gulf and the availability of fossil fuels is putting pressure on the price of fuel, which will affect the cost of electricity. But savings is, for prudent person, get that energy conservation audit done, take those measures that are recommended, and you will save, and that savings will be permanent.
Anybody have comments on it? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I agree with Charlie, you did a terrific job. I may ask for a commit, if you don't mind my taking over the meeting from there. Communications from members of the public, I think, would you be prepared to say anything, Mr. Ryan? Did you have a question for the Assembly?
I actually have a question, just for sure. When the report from the Health and Human Services Standing Committee, meeting of August 4th, when will that be made to the Assembly?
We could make that report... No, you're talking about the report of the August...
August 4th, there was a meeting in the Standing Committee, Health and Human Services. I presume that there's going to be a report made to the full Assembly. And as you understand, I'd be quite interested in being present for that, so I'm wondering when that's going to happen.
You did make that, right? You really made that.
You did, the very day of the meeting?
Yes, you did. Okay. You can probably find it in the minutes. It's in our meeting minutes, which we can...
Okay, I will look at that.
Thank you. It's also available on the Internet.
I will. Also, thank you for the video. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Thank you, Chair. That was me.
Well, that's all I have. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. When we opened the meeting, we didn't have the approval of the August 5th minutes.
Yeah, we can't take any action. We can't...
We have now, Mr. President. We have now, Mr. President.
No, I don't know.
44 percent.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you locked in at 8, I'm sorry.
Let's move to 4.
I need to step aside for a second.
Not that Shore doesn't get any respect, but.
Very glad.
Very glad.
We like Shore, yes, those are terrific places.
Are we open concession or?
Well, yeah, I mean, we can, well, send a convene.
I don't think you can convene, can you?
Can't convene.
You can't convene.
What can we talk?
Can we speak to the commission? The meeting is open, you can ask the commission any questions you wish.
You can ask.
The bad news is, we can't adjourn either, so we're just stuck here. Somebody shows up.
Mr. Speaker?
Yes?
I just have one point. You know, we have a very important program that the county is promoting about buying local. And I think George makes a good point here about the banking business. And I think we should try to look into whether Cape Cod Fire, CMMs, or some other local bank could buy a level of services. In one of the areas, I mean, there are lots of different areas here that Bank North is fulfilling, you know, this need. And because the profits that are made by that bank do stay local, they are then lent out to the local developers and municipal projects. And I think it could be a good example of that, that counties also are trying to buy local, if possible.
I have a question. On the bi-local situation. Why are we limiting bi-local to produce? Why can't we talk about televisions and other merchandise items? Why can't we increase the ability of buying from local vendors in many ways and not just upriver?
I think Steve has a little thing.
No, I agree, but I mean, as we do our promotions for it, we could expand the.
I think I know what Leo's going to say, but I'll give.
There is a bi-local program that is not county. And I know WCAI has a bi-local program. And they've put out a list of all the people that are being supported and issues for the discount program for bi-local for everybody.
The only thing I wanted to add to that is that the Bi-Local, Buy Fresh campaign is a national campaign, it's a trademark national campaign. And the County Excellence Service has worked through in coordination with the national campaign to use their logo, Buy Fresh, Buy Local. So although it may have started and its roots were to help and to inspire people to buy produce locally, it doesn't mean that we are narrowed by that. I think if we're going to stay within the parameters of the national concept of it, yes, but certainly, you know, we could probably extend our suggestion to local people to, you know, to, in fact, encourage people to buy locally, whether it be t-shirts or hats or whatever, that supports smaller stores. But the campaign itself was designed for produce.
Yeah, and that's what the grants are locally intended really for. But I would say, Bill Clark has indicated, I'm not sure maybe to you, but in '11, they're expanding it to try to work with fishermen, I know the Hook Fisherman's Association is working with Bill Clark to try to work something so that they can, instead of, you know, all fishermen driving the fish up to Boston to the fish market up there and then trucking it back to Cape Cod to the restaurants, to try to set up a method where the local fishermen deal directly with the local market on Cape Cod. I mean, the issues are bigger than we think they are. There's middlemen out there, and there's wholesalers and distributors and blah, 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 blah. You know, there's been a whole history of these markets set up, and so you have to sometimes undo some of this, you know, hundreds of years, basically, of this marketing. But they're working on it. I know Bill is trying to do it with the Hook Fisherman's Association, so it's little steps. And we will certainly look at the banking aspect of that. I don't have an issue looking at that. I mean, my frustration sometimes is, is we deal with a global marketplace, whether we like it or not. And, you mean, you can buy a Chevrolet that's made in Canada, and you can buy a Toyota that's made in Tennessee, but what if that Toyota's pieces are made in Japan, shipped to Tennessee, and assembled in Tennessee? What does, you know, what does all of that mean? A lot of it loses its meaning.
Fred, you have a wonderful opportunity right now with regard to this issue, because one of the issues in terms of procurement is also a procurement of services. And we're in the legislative election season, and you have several people that, you know, that are putting themselves out to represent your interests. I think that this is, since it would require legislation to change the procurement process for services because of the issue with regard to prevailing wage, for example, this would be a great opportunity to find out what those folks that are putting themselves forward to run for public office, because the state legislation is, have a great deal to do with opening that door. So I think that, you know, I think your question has posed as an opportunity to see whether or not those folks that are putting themselves forward have any appetite to support it.
I'm sure a lot of them do. I can't speak for the candidates I support, but they probably would. To me, it's more than, it's not really a patriotic issue. It really is an efficiency issue. It's one of, yeah, our people that's really much of what we just talked about, all of the mill, when we go to Stop &amp; Shop, and how much of that money goes to the networks for profits, as opposed to the supermarketeers who are supporting our schools, our work programs, and our programs.
Well, the greatest percentage of the businesses on the Cape are small businesses. They're not the largest. But this might be a great topic of conversation with the EDC and maybe with members of the General Committees. I mean, having a short discussion between them, I think, might prove quite interesting, and maybe they have some good ideas about how we might be able, maybe to have our own bi-local program, you know, not, maybe mirroring or mirroring to some respects the Buy Fresh, Buy Local, but see if there isn't something that we could do that would really enhance the whole of the businesses here.
We don't see three chambers, you know, the chambers that are not the chamber, you know, Cape Cod Chamber, almost, intending to meet with our EDC in the first meeting in September. And I believe that that's a topic that they're very interested in. They represent, I believe, you use a figure of 11,000 businesses. They represent a substantial portion of the workforce that are located in the individual towns that, you know, that the individual chambers of Congress represent. And it's something that, you know, they're very concerned with, because they want to, they want to make sure, since it's a member service organization like the Cape Cod Chamber and Congress, to make sure that they are fairly representing opportunity for the businesses that they represent. And are we looking forward to it, or are they going to come to the EDC? Of course, they have a dialogue, they want to begin that, but I think what they're asking is that we're part of that. And I invite you to come together. Listen, and add your own voice.
Oh, yeah, the EDC, but you have a piece to that, is too, is that the local businesses also sustain jobs on the Cape? I mean, it has a lot more than just buying. It's the whole idea of local people paying important.
The issue, I guess the issue I have with the banks, and I'm not a banking expert, it's a bit of a Dallas Morning Journal, but when banks are chartered, they have a certain, depending on another charter, they have a certain obligation to spend a certain amount of money in the neighborhoods that they get the money from. It's a lot easier for them to collect all that money from you, you and me, and everybody having a little accounts, and they say, hey, all we can go up, we'll lend it to Donald Trump, he'll build a casino, and he'll borrow $300 million at 8 percent. Why should I bother with Ron, you know, who needs, you know, or who wants to expand the business, or somebody he wants to have a mortgage, and so why should I bother with all these little people around here? I'll just give it to Citibank and they'll pay me whatever. So the idea is that even though they're obligated to spend a certain amount of money in the communities that they draw their funds from, we in turn can also look into where they spend their money, how much of the money that we put in there, how much of the money that's invested in a bank, let's say Cape Cod Fire or Bank North or something, is actually spent in the local communities, as to how much is shipped, you know, to the mega deal, which is a lot easier to make. So, I mean, like I said, I'm not a banking expert, but obviously, capital is important to small businesses that want to expand, they want to start up something, and, you know, I think, all of us have stood in front of bankers and look at us like, who the hell are you? You want to borrow what? You know, I'm too busy lending this guy, this guy who's going to lose it, you know, and in some big real estate deal than I am to deal with your petty mortgage. So, maybe I'm being cynical, but I think it's something.
You know, banks have certain portfolio objectives. Some have what I call a residential portfolio objective, which may not serve a commercial, let's say, a commercial entity. Some banks have a commercial, primarily a commercial, you know, portfolio responsibility. The commercial portfolio typically from those times when I was in the drug and traffic sector, are less risk diverse than, you know, than a residential portfolio. So these are all things to factor in. But as I remember, you know, on the conversation with regard to when we looked at it years ago, that I can remember, it had a lot to do with whether or not the commercial services that were available from the bank met the needs of the, let's say, the global responsibility for the county.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just, and perhaps at the risk of tooting our own horn, for the Lower Cape, the EDC in fact did sponsor the meeting a couple of weeks ago, with all three county commissioners for president, and Dan Gray, Lisa Penn, Paul Sookie, were there where we talked about.
And David Willard.
And David, well, David Willard was the one who called the meeting. And in fact, part of the discussion was about the chambers collaborating and using the new wealth link website that has been developed over the past year, discoverwealthlink.com, using some of that technology to not only bring tourist dollars and business into Cape, Lower Cape in the off-season, but also to keep those dollars here through kind of the bi-local program. We intend to work closely with the CVP, and that was kind of the initial salvo. So there are things that are happening, I would just say, on the local level and on a small regional level that are already working on it. I think the EDC deserves a credit for having taken the initiative and calling this meeting, which is going to be followed up.
And Paul, you're going to tie it into the RDA so that people don't get to the wealth link, right?
Yes, I want to clarify what I said earlier. And also, if you want to keep dollars here, you deal with wealth of these. If you go over and spend money at Liam's, you know it's going to stay on the Cape. If you go to Rendy's, that money is gone the next day, and the same is true of Stockton Shops. You can deal with local people and feel very satisfied. What I meant about the county banking is that there should be some sort of current judgment of the cost of writing checks and any other functions that they're doing. I think you mentioned seven years ago.
It was quite a while ago.
Yeah.
I think it was the first day of the conference.
You know, the world has turned over many times in seven years. Countries have actually gone bankrupt, banks have disappeared in the last three years. It's a different world. I had the pleasure of talking to the head of the largest housing agency on the Cape, and he told me that they negotiated with all of the large banks. And I'm not suggesting that you can service county because we have limited skills, but he said that they picked one bank based on negotiations. That happened to be Sovereign, and Sovereign, of course, is a Spanish bank now, largely a Spanish bank. I'm not suggesting that it has to be an American bank, but we've heard from Cape Light, all the money they saved, we should be concerned about the tax dollars as well and how they invest.
But money doesn't seem, you know, by contact is saved by consumers. That's the saving that represents, that's the money that, you know, that the county creates. We can put that money in people's pockets.
The towns on the Cape, the budgets and expenses of the towns on the Cape are approaching $1 billion a year. I haven't done last year, but it was up to $715 million. If you could save 10% from a billion dollars, $100 million, and I'm sure that the.
$100 million.
If you could save 10% by negotiating with the banks on the Cape, $100 million.
To Mark's credit, he has provided what I would call, you know, high level of management and accountability. The county is in the blood. Other counties are not.
We have to be as sharp as Cape Light.
Anything else?
I just want to throw this out to people who aren't aware of, there is a, actually, international living economy. It's getting a lot of traction in Europe and other places in this country, and it's a focus that looks at not bi-local, but looking at the impact of every economic decision, what it has within the local economy. And it looks at not only consumer choices, but also to business-to-business buying choices. It looks at leakage, it looks at where money leaves the economies, things like energy efficiency actually is part of sort of the living economy approach, of looking at this whole dynamic piece and how each of our decisions impacted. And that's actually an area the county has, oh, I would love to see, become more deeply involved in understanding the whole regional dynamics and putting in place policies that, you know, perhaps, look at this living economy movement, because we're exactly the kind of region where it's how we should be living, and there would be definite measure of the benefits to us if we were to follow a path like that. But it doesn't, bi-local isn't like to sort of an isolated, make-one-decision. It's a much bigger, integrated, international approach to how do you sustain individual places.
The National Graduate School of Intelligence and Technology has put forward a request to support a grant, to support an examination of something that sounds very much like what you're talking about, sustainability. We are participating, you know, as part of that. If they do get that grant, I think they'll be part of the evaluation of what they're looking at, you know, if you advise, hopefully, you will see that. I'm kind of excited about the study, but it is looking at how we can maintain or develop a sustainable approach to, you know, to live here. You know, there are many issues that we need to continue to address to reach what I've been looking forward to here, which is, how do we arrive at a level of livable, not livable wage, but livable income? Because that seems to be the thing that's lacking here on the Cape, that there are many jobs that, you know, that are available that require what I would call involuntary partnership of that job with local government, in order to support the services that, you know, that draw feed. Somehow, we have to identify what that path is, and I'm hoping that this, the National Graduate School attempt will at least give us some answers. The other thing you should do, where I say, the fact that we're about to start an operational audit of the county itself.
Not an audit, an assessment.
A assessment.
Was he audited?
But the assessment would, you know, would indeed look at our operation and how we are contributing or not to supporting, you know, the goals of our constituents and all of bonds of the county. You know, this is something that the path basically has taken as a focus and a thrust, and certainly something that I support. I'm looking forward to, you know, beginning that, and keep you advised as we get information from that as well.
It'll be on our agenda, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Anything else? I guess I need a motion to adjourn, we can't vote, and so I guess we'll just adjourn.
That's a good point. Don't you say that you can't meet and adjourn.
That's a nice one, adjourn.
So you can adjourn.